So move on to a discussion about filling our vacant board vacation seat resulting from Richard Walker's resignation.
Well, we have like a history here where we have actually in the past appointed a member that just left the board previously to fill a position. That happened when Lori Rich had to leave and Dean Ballas, who'd been off the board for a few months, was able to fill in the rest of Lori's term or till the next year, I think, right? Which brings us to Lisa Rosenthal, actually, directly. So, you know, I think one option would be to ask Lisa to graciously serve again, although she's been planning to have a lot more free time. As it turns out, though, I learned at our last meeting that we have 90 days to make a decision, so that could be part of a negotiation.
We wait outside around.
Go on vacation. So that is, seems to be an option out there. And that would be a terrific service to the community and to your colleagues.
I would be happy to do that if it's the will of the board to have made. And not partially because I respect you all very much and do not want the board or the district to be in any sort of discomfort because of vacancy. And partly, I have to say, because of the great affection that I have for Rick Walker, who was such a wonderful and valuable member of the board during his two years of service, not to mention the many years of service he had in the past. And I think it would be a disservice to not step into that breach if people wanted.
Laura?
Well, I wholeheartedly second Deirdre's thought that you stay on this. I think it would help in the transition to the next year. Willing and happy doing it for me, I'm happy.
Deirdre?
I think we would get to defer for a year the despair of saying goodbye. So, and really, I mean, you've been such an amazing member of this, of this board. Your willingness to serve is truly appreciated.
I will say one more thing, that seeing you get up and give your son his diploma on Saturday, I said to myself, "I love the opportunity."
It's a great reward.
Yeah, I think if you're willing to do that, that would be, you of course love that. But in Denver, all these past years, it can be wonderful. It can be difficult. The other option would rather be a special election, which would take time and then someone would have to commit and be training. It would be difficult to do that in a year, I think, you know, with so much going on. So, yeah, to do that, that would help us.
All right, so I'll, I agree with everything that's been said. So it sounds to me like we have consensus. So we have to put it in the resolution on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes, I would say if that's the way the board is inclined, as I'm hearing, and Lisa's agreeable, of course, then I would recommend that we have a resolution on the organization meeting on the 12th of July to appoint Lisa to, to fill the remainder of the term vacated by Rick Walker. And as long as we get four out of seven votes, then you're in. Something tells me it will be unanimous, though. So that, if that's the way we want to go, that's what I think we should do, and then that's a, that's a done deal.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, so that's been concluded. We'll move on to good news. So, go ahead.
Fabulous graduation. Really the capstone of the year for our students.
Can I piggyback on that?
Sure.
One of the really remarkable things about the graduation at the high school is that, of course, it sort of reminds anyone who's actually got a kid graduating of the previous graduations and the sort of the echoes and the resonance of those, of those special moments kind of coming together in that final ceremony. But the really beautiful thing, I think, about graduation in this school district is the way so many people come to it who don't have a child who's graduating and community members come, kids who are coming up, you know, through the school, come and watch the oldest ones moving out into the world and alums come back and, you know, it's genuinely gives one a feeling of such community, the many people who want to come and speak to the graduates and to the community and to give gifts of money and amazing generosity of this community in supporting our young people. And that, to me, is actually a really distinctive thing about Ryan Beck, and I think we should cherish it and, and describe it and celebrate it because it is, it is really special. Very good news.
All right. Diane, did you ever hand up?
Just want to say it's just kind of a great school year. Just kind of a way that we finish on a higher level at school year, and we start tonight, all three things to the prom.
Well, I'd piggyback on that and say, obviously, it's not been without adversity in a number of different, no, but in spite of, I mean, in spite of that, I think the good news is we can sit here today and say, you know, it was a pretty good year.
Right.
So, you know, when you can say it's a pretty good year when things haven't been perfect, although I gotta say that commencement was about as close to perfect as I, as I can recall it being, thanks to you and your staff for that.
Other good news? All right, move on to old business. Any old business? All right, seeing none. And seeing no public present, we'll move on to other. Laura?
I have just a quick other, Tom, thank you for putting the Diva Minutes notes in our pocket.
Oh, we're here and we do, yeah.
In our pocket. I wanted to ask about this archive exchange.
Yep.
The digital delivery of paperless enrollment. Paperless enrollment. So are we one of the seven schools that are considering enrolling in this?
Not this year. We're gonna consider it for the following year. This is the first year it was offered. We wanted to see how the other school districts adapted to it because there was a lot of work you got to put into it. And at the time, that's when our personnel assistant was, she resigned, and we haven't replaced her and not planning to replace her, but it was just too overwhelming to get it up and going as of July 1st. So we wanted other school districts to do it first, get any, any bugs out of the way, and that we would probably follow up with the next year with it.
Great. Yeah, I was thinking, despite the upfront work, it might actually help.
Yeah.
Great.
Diane?
Do we have a date for shredding?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I'm glad you mentioned it, actually.
Happy birthday, Shred.
It's a few more weeks, but. We just got something from Diane yesterday, didn't we? Did arrange for it.
Let's put that in our playbook.
Well, you can bring it in anytime, but do you have the date there?
Actually, we have to just circulate that date.
Oh, we will.
Yeah, you don't want to have buckets sit around.
Yep, we were gonna send that out. We're ready for shredding. It's gonna be Wednesday, July 20th.
July 20th is the day?
Wednesday, July 20th. So you have to get it here, they're usually here first thing in the morning.
Okay, so before the 20th.
So before the 20th, so. You can bring it in with you if you want, when we have our next board meeting.
Really? We'll be sitting around your office. That's a lot of stuff. It's okay?
It's gotta sit somewhere. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to, but it's one less trip for you to make up here. Yeah, and typically what we'll do is we'll put it in a room, lock it up. A big wheelbarrow and we'll, not a problem.
So for the 12th, we could bring it then?
Yeah, you can. Or anytime before or after, before the 20th, whatever works for you.
Okay.
Mr. Slaton stopped by and dropped off a bunch of stuff a couple of months ago that he found that he had and said, "Here, get rid of this stuff, I don't mind." So, I mean, we'll take that stuff whenever you have it.
Okay.
Deirdre?
Yeah, another thing, I just, instead of removing it from the consent agenda, I just want to note that we're accepting the resignation of Brian McDonald today, tonight. And, you know, he was, I just want to recognize that he was instrumental in revamping the middle school and then into the high school technology program as a young graduate and really has done a terrific job. And I know we're all sorry to see him go, but we wish him well. But he really came into the school with a very particular mission that was, you know, kind of a lot to take on, and he really ran with it. So we've been fortunate to have him, and I just wanted to acknowledge him publicly.
The other, the other that I had was, we have two law conferences coming up this summer. One is, the NISBA one in Latham is on Thursday, July 14th. The, the one, the Mid Hudson School Study Council one down at Mount St. Mary's College is on Friday, August 5th. They have at least one of the same speakers, Jay Arona, will be speaking at both, but beyond Jay, the, the, the topics are different, so you could attend both and only have to snooze through Jay's, and he's usually pretty entertaining anyway. If you are interested in going, especially the NISBA one in Latham on the 14th, you need to let Mary Ann know, like, before the end of this week, because we have to get you registered. The other thing is kind of doing a little thinking out, the annual NISBA conference this year is in Buffalo, and I don't say that to discourage anybody from going. Buffalo is a lovely town that time of year. But if, again, if we're going to go, or if anybody is going to go, we need to make plans for lodging and registration and whatnot, and the further into the summer it gets, the more difficult that becomes. That's, that's all, so just.
So I have been remiss, I haven't let you know, but I would like to go to the, to the convention.
Okay, are you taking notes there, Mary Ann? Yep.
What are the dates again for Buffalo?
The 27th through the 29th. It's like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday this year. You can't go.
Well, it's a take it or we'll have, how am I not agree with you? Ducks, actually, lots of chicken wings, ducks.
Is this October 27th?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm a big fan of Buffalo. I love Buffalo.
Yeah, having spent quite a good time there, my son went to school there, it's really a nice town.
Yeah, it is.
I think the benefit, a benefit, to being in Buffalo is that it would be less expensive. I know we're, you know, we're very expense minded and we did shave some money out of the board budget, but we didn't, we didn't cut it flat. So there would, there will be money for folks to go, and there are other ways to address it if people want to spend less money. But I think just the fact that it's in Buffalo will, will be a less pricey price tag than having to do it in New York City, as much as I enjoy going to the city.
Would it be reasonable to consider maybe a half of the number of us that go? Maybe try to continue as possible, like, maybe?
Well, you know, we, well, you know what we can do? We can, maybe in her spare time, yuck, yuck, Mary Ann could, could check out some of the costs for the hotel rooms, like NISBA usually has a block, and just kind of cost it out to say, "Okay, this is what we budgeted, this is what we anticipate. It's gonna cost for a member to go for the three days or two and a half days, and either we need to limit the numbers to X or..."
Maybe not.
"Maybe we won't have to, I mean, maybe we'll have enough."
Yeah, that's okay.
So, you know, we could do some preliminary costing out over the next several weeks and then let you guys know, this is what we think we can, we can make happen financially. Yeah.
And Mary Ann, I would like to go to the NISBA law conference.
The one in Latham on the 14th?
Yeah, Latham, yeah.
All right, any other other? All right, so then we'll move on to our action items. Is there anyone who would like to remove something from the consent agenda? All right, so may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2016-17 course enrollment waivers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Hold, hold, hold.
Discussion?
We've called it here.
Go ahead.
So, and I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm speaking out of turn.
No, I know you have questions. I just wanted to comment that I just, you know, again, it relates to our board goal. I mean, just the number of courses here, you know, that are, many of them are not, they're electives. I love it. I mean, it's great.
Yes.
And a lot of, you know, enrollment, so, good work.
Yeah, work with our guidance counselors and our faculty developing courses and working on correcting this summer. Of course, hopefully, it will be sustained and sustained. Yeah, I'm very excited to have that moment.
Ed, would you just review with the board very quickly what the changes are from this revision that you provided to me today and the original document that went into the board packets on Thursday or Friday night?
Yeah. Speaking of, I don't have the original document, so I'll just work through memory. That's about it.
Do you want to copy it?
Yes.
Yeah, painting's in here, so this is the, yeah.
Yeah, painting bumped up. And mathematics of finance. There's a couple.
Oh, those are the same.
So one of the significant reductions, we had, had Introduction to Sociology, a semester course on, it was enrolled, that enrolled, that had 11 requests, and as some of our counselors are beginning to resolve some conflicts and also continue to be the students who have changed to the request, two other students requested Introduction to Sociology, and now that has 13 requests, so that would remove that.
It's above the threshold now.
It's above the threshold, okay.
Above the threshold as well. And I think that was, and we picked up two, not that this requires a waiver, but two other students requesting mathematics and finance. Had been 25, and now the first request is 27.
And you picked up two in painting, apparently.
Painting, yes, thank you, yeah. In addition, we picked up two students requesting painting, one of the upper level of our courses. And I'd expect some here and there, which mostly, of course, nothing ever green on Buffalo, but here and there for some of the courses, as students resolve some conflicts and continue with guidance counselors, that may be annexed to some of the courses. With the exception of some of our second semester courses, graphic designing and multimedia and credit making, those courses are preceded in semester one by our courses that are above the threshold and 14s. Typically, what happens, what happened historically, the students, the first semester course will enroll in the second semester course, for one reason, they haven't completed that enrollment process yet. You can see in enrollment in multimedia last year, the 15, 16 enrollment was 18. And so I would expect that enrollment for that second semester course this year will be about the same. In addition, with graphic design, that's preceded by digital photography, and current semester one, we have 15 students who have requested digital photography. So I expect that enrollment of students will take graphic design in the second semester.
All right, Deirdre?
So you've presented to us all the courses with fewer than 12 requests for our consideration. Are there courses that had very low enrollments that you've decided not to offer and therefore are not appearing here?
Just our fashion design and interior design courses had one or two students request them. So we didn't, the counselors said we didn't plot those.
Okay.
And I assume without an idea that they would fill up with kids from other classes. I mean, obviously, I had to make a decision.
Yes. And before we make that decision, I'll confirm with Robert, just to clarify, what do you think? Can we expect any more?
Right.
Because they're on the front lines, I have to say, in terms of students. It didn't seem like those courses could come up. My thought perhaps is that some of the courses, Introduction to Interior Design, may have put some of those students, who are just sitting here and designing, to enroll.
And may I ask a follow-up question? Is AP Euro isn't on this list, so does that mean that it has over 12 students signed up for it?
Yes, it has over 12 students.
Excellent.
Over 12 students, I think it had 13 or 14.
Great. Brilliant, great.
90 students request, that's, typically, that, as you recall, it runs 12.
Can be small.
Yeah. So that'd be one set, one section.
And what, since you have the sheet there, what, what is, what are your enrollments in, looking like in AP chemistry?
We have 26 requests in AP chemistry.
Okay, and that was a softball I just threw you, as a result of us all being at graduation on Saturday, but.
Better add for, for Ryan chemistry.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
And in chemistry, we have seven students requesting chemistry.
Regular chemistry?
Regular chemistry. As I've talked with Mr. Brinell and Mr. Frinell, and that's chemistry enrollment, for me, just as a side note, the back of a checkbook calculation, that's what bellwethers of the strong actor approach, how many students are taking chemistry, how many students are taking out, for sure.
Great.
So that is a kind of issue both of, where students are prepared, in the science department and the math department, and Mr. Stevenson's extensive talent in terms of who gave students and not enrolled in the study.
That's great.
Diane?
So this, the multimedia incrementing, so you thought that it's gonna increase enrollment, but we're going to do this tonight, and it does increase, and you still have a lot of class or three students, or what do you think would happen?
Well, that's, that's a great question. If more did enroll, and I will say that historically, we have had a lot of students enroll. You know, practically, religiously speaking, we have a second semester course, and there are, there's a lot of, we're gonna produce, the teaching load, I don't know in terms of timeframe if we'll be able to do that in compliance with districts that are in our area. If we were to do that and were able to do this timeline to reduce it, back a little by 10, 10% by 10.
Point one.
By 10, 1. And so, the impact there would be, off the top of my head, looking at the fact of the chancellor and the department, so not a best-case scenario. I would, most likely, if we're looking at that direction, I would prefer with the department and the state department, you know, the worthwhile effective use of their time for students to keep them at full time and also still, at least, to make it a better for tomorrow for students.
All right, other questions on this item? All right, so all those in favor? Unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion, Mahalo, recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the proposed mastery option regarding the Common Core English Regents Examination as an alternative to taking English 11 Regents and Advanced Placement Literature and Constitution Scientifician State.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Deirdre?
So, my concern is, you know, one of my concerns is sort of the way we run the earth science program has created this sort of subculture of kids who get tutoring to take the earth science regions in order to skip earth science. And that does seem inequitable, that people who have the ability to pay for tutoring are more advantaged than in order to, to, to take, to pass, to get through, not take the earth science class that we offer. And I know I've been in many a curriculum meeting over the years to discuss all that and what that means. But, and I'm sure there are similarities and differences with this proposal, but I have concerns about creating another system by which kids who have an advantage financially can prepare to take the English exam. Now, I'm trying to figure out, because you just reported earlier, that 99% of our kids passed in 11th grade, right, this year? So I'm trying to understand, like, what, what meaning to draw from that, right? So, like, our kids don't have a problem passing it in 11th grade, what does it mean to take it in 10th grade? I guess a part of me wonders, what about the, so that's a consideration in sort of who are we advantaging, how we're upping the ante continuously, like, in this sort of larger culture of keep pressuring kids to take more AP and keep, just, you know, more stress. You know, we, we had a report from a committee, the School Start Time Committee, that had met with our Student Support Services staff, who talked about the stress that kids are under and sort of what, what do we put in place that encourages kids to continuously try to, more APs, more achievement, more achievement, achievement, when, you know, I'm just, I just want to be conscious of what kind of climate we're creating, about equity, around stress, and then around a question of, well, what about, like, when it was English honors, what happened, how is that, how is that decision made? Right? So, like, if this is, because the AP, now there is no English honors in 11th grade, but there previously was. So how is that decision made? And maybe this could just fit into that decision? Or what if it's just you decide yourself to, you know, in consultation with the guidance council or your parents, and you take the exam at the end of 11th grade? If the argument goes that it's not a, that it's a skills test, not a content test, then is it reasonable to think those kids without taking, could just pass it at the end of 11th grade? Even if, you know, I mean, like, that you are, and take AP, but you still have to take the Regents at the end of that class? I have no objection to you and your staff making a decision about classes, that kids fit or don't fit, and how they do that. I worry about the test, that an entry point to that is taking a test out of sequence, and who that advantages and who that doesn't advantage. And so, if there's a way you can do that without a test, then I'm okay with it.
Laura?
Can I, just to help with that question? So if you could frame for us what the English 11 Common Core Regents Exam looks like now, and this was the first year, so we have no experience of that exam. So what does that, what's that test formula look like?
Well, two things, and the proposal from the department is that not students who would score an A or a B, which is a particular proficiency level, and to give some background of the recommendation of the English department is that the Common Core Vericole and Data ballot in 11 is worthwhile, is an important one, not only in the skills analysis, but also in the specific content, it's a focus on American religion. And, you know, I'll speak for them. And I'll speak for them, you know, an educated citizen or a democratic public has to be aware of our literature and of our literary history. That's valuable and is a valuable preparation for the Common Core Regents Exam, which covers, as I mentioned, reading and writing typically in spots. So there's some detailed reading comprehension questions and an opportunity for students to display their understanding of rhetorical devices, argument, and to produce that. It moves somewhat away from, in the previous iteration of the conference, the English, she'll focus on literary terms, literary appreciation, literary devices and figures. It's still an important part of the exam, but there's more of a pivot towards, and I don't say this pejoratively, towards, it's going to sound pejorative, it's not, practical English as a rhetorical skill so that students can both produce arguments and analyze and construct arguments. So that's, you know, the thumbnail of the Common Core Regents, in my view, is a measure. In terms of the replacing English XI Honors with the AP course, the thought of the department, my support was they wanted to expand opportunities for students and offer another AP in a cost-neutral way. And therefore, thought to pilot, replace for the English XI Honors with an AP course. Wanted also to maximize some flexibility with students, so students could sign up either for AP Literature or AP Language in XI or XII. Initially, the department recommended, again with my support, that these courses would be in a co-requisite relationship in the middle grade. All students would take English XI Regents. Based on the curriculum and on the content, if students want to deepen and expand their studies of language and literature, they can take one of two AP courses. As we continued our programming, we started to schedule students, got some feedback from students in pairs, that that required, that co-requisite requirement was taking up a pretty big footprint in the potential scheduling of students. And they wondered if there was any way to believe that. So the department looked at the existing, rather called waiver process, we're trying to rephrase that as a mastery option, looked at what was developed for English XII, where students who met certain criteria, certain situations, were exempted, or were able to demonstrate mastery of English XII Regents. And in developing that waiver, the department, again emphasizing what the Common Core Regents Test measures and certainly agreeing with the importance of the chemistry students for success after high school. Wanted to see proficiency or mastery level on AP or below, what happened with the Regents exam, we wanted to give students the opportunity to demonstrate the mastery of that. So in a nutshell, that was the history of this proposal that the department has developed. Any response to some concerns for parents of students that required a co-requisite might take up too much space in this study.
So, I'll get to you, but, so I have two questions. One is, the proposal is to allow students to take the AP, new AP course, assuming that they have passed the Regents Exam at the end of 10th grade, correct?
With one correct, that they have scored an 80 or above.
Okay.
Which translates into a Level 4.
So is it, is it the opinion of the English Department and yourself that students who choose this option will have been prepared by us to take the Regents Exam at the end of 10th grade and get an 80 or above?
In my view, there's no typical student course, but I'd assume that most if not all of the students will have taken English IX Honors or English X Honors. And in my view, I'd prefer with the department, but yeah, I would think that these students score certainly prepare to score 80 or above in the Regents Exam. My research and the client around, schools give the English Regents really any time you want. It would be crazy to give it in 9th grade, but many schools give it, particularly for honors students, they'll give it in 10th grade. Some schools in the past have had students take the English Regents in January of junior year, that way they'd see who might be more remediation for changing. So there's no requirement that students have to take it in particular, only that they have to pass the tests.
So I think you've answered my next question, which was, you know, why not just have those students take the Regents at the end of 11th grade, since they will have already taken the AP exam by the end of the school year in 11th grade?
Well, to speak for the English Department, they're, again, I'm speaking for them, but I think I'm on solid ground. They would require or request or recommend that students take English XI Regents. It's about a curriculum that's very important for failing that, wanting to be flexible in response to some student concerns. They would at least want students to be able to demonstrate that they've mastered the skills that that curriculum covers.
Okay. Deuter?
In your view, would it be very difficult, and maybe this is what's motivating these parents who have questions? Would it be very difficult for a student in 11th grade to enroll in both of those, AP English and the Regents English? And also be undertaking, let's say, AP coursework in science? Or would it really be the case that students would start to kind of go in tracks, like towards doing science or doing humanities? That would be a question I would have. I mean, we would want to, I would think we'd want to preserve flexibility so students could combine all of those options.
I'll answer it two ways. It did a beta test is the wrong way to look at it, but I looked at, or what would I phrase it? I looked at students currently who are in English XI Honors to say, all right, those students, let's say that they would want to take the AP, would they be able to fit, you know, this year, a second AP course, English XI Regents in their program? Most would, when I look at this year's students. That being said, what's more difficult to factor in is, you know, for the student who may be taking AP Chemistry and who may be a two-season athlete, who may be taking AP Language. That begins to change the calculus in a certain sense. So it's not, for me, I'm thinking about, it's not quite as simple as saying, well, she's got room in her schedule.
Right.
We take two, there's other factors. In addition, in thinking about the waiver that we put in place, mastery option for senior year, there's one of the options that allow for, you know, another compelling scenario that will allow for this behavior. Because again, with seniors, sometimes there are, what we found is that there are family obligations and work obligations that really change what students are going to do during the school day. So we want to be able to adapt to all of that as well. So I think to summarize, we want to be flexible, but flexible in a way that ensures that the students have mastered the curriculum and the skills that will allow them to be successful after high school. And those are measured by the Common Core English Regents.
Deuter?
So if you take the AP and you don't take English, the XI R English class, then in 12th grade, you would take what English class?
So just to make it easier for me to be concrete, so we'll say a student, if this waiver process, mastery process improved, the student exercises that options, scores an 80 or above on the English, it's English, AP, AP Literature in 11th grade. And in 12th grade, the students' option would be to take English XII R and/or the second AP, English course, AP Language.
Do you have any concerns about this issue of like the subculture of parents who tutor their children to pass exams? And sort of creating a dual system in our high school that students who have professional-class parents who can help them get as many APs as possible, and students who don't have those advantages?
Well, I'll answer it this way. I would prefer, and I've studied some parents of students, I would prefer that no one goes to any tutor center in high school. I don't think it's necessary. If they need help, we have teachers here, that's what they're here for, that's what they do, we're certified, they're professionals, they're excellent. So that would be my preference, but, you know, I live in the world, definitely all, and I know that that's not the case. I don't know how to prevent, prevent that, other than to say, hey, we have teachers here. Our guidance counselors are, in certain areas, messages that everyone is on a different developmental time, everyone is a individual. You don't have to keep up with the Joneses, you have to do what's best for you. But in this particular case of English, we have students who will take ninth grade English, tenth grade English, those are Common Core line courses. I think more so than in the case of the Earth Science Exam, the students, they don't take Earth Science, they take physical sciences in middle school, but it's a completely divorced. I think that drives them, if I may, towards tutoring. I would think that, I wouldn't say that in English, that there's that push towards tutoring in preparation for the exam, since the students are in the process of. But to answer your question more directly, yeah, that's a concern. I'm not happy when I hear that, and I don't really have hard data on this, but I hear that students are going to tutor, I think it would be tutor outside of school to prepare for a course that we teach, or to try to advance, or not. But those make it safer.
Who had a hand at first?
Couple of questions. I guess I just don't understand why, based on the record, why students can't just choose which one to take. It gives so much, maybe, at least to the typical just not in the middle schedule, which is that's usually the only way that people hands out, and they take the English at the end, you know, one day. More than likely, they'll pass the Regents, if that's something to talk about. What it does is, it eliminates that, like, who's going to know about this way to get this waiver? I wonder, not that a lot of kids are getting tutored for this, but that who knows how to do this? Not with the system, who knows, you know, how would anybody go forward if this happened, you know, 10th grade this year? How would go forward, how would I know? That, you know, that's one of the Earth Science things that most people don't know. So I just think, you know, let them choose the class they want to take. I mean, those classes are valid, we have a lot of classes that are valid, kids who want to take even more if they could, but, you know, let them decide and then just take the Regents, and it kind of eliminates that problem.
Well, I think, again, to speak for the English Department, they were saying, well, the English XI R course is a course you have to take. That prepares you for the Regents Exam, that covers American literature. If you want to take, if you want to take more than that, that's great, but you got to take English XI R.
Except when you're talking about an exception to that for some of the kids. You know, pretty if we're going to say that, then we should just say that we believe this is the best course and, you know, that's the way it has to be. And I'm just wondering, would this open the door to like someone that's, you know, doing math, say, you know, I want to take the Regents here, like, you know, it sounds that way? Will it kind of open the door for these, and sell in certain areas to try to, you know, do that?
In mathematics, we've had two or three students over the past 10 years who liked precalculus as a senior and have not taken precalculus as a junior. So what we've done in those instances, you know, pretty rare, those students will take the precalculus, most typically it's the BCC, and then will take our precalculus by the same year. And if they pass that exam, and they're quite fit to take the BCC for precal, then we'll enroll and they. So again, the department is trying to be flexible in terms of what parents and students are looking for. And speaking with them, I know the bottom line is, English XI R, that should be required for everyone. Like, they're trying to pilot a system that's going to do a different solution.
So if I pilot this, how would let the next year's class know? Are the teachers going to identify and offer that, or like how, you know, we'll just become less in certain aspects and all that?
Well, for sake of argument, and again, I'll talk about the science element, John's staff has given a clue about that option. We started talking about that in the elementary year, in high school. A couple of years ago, we had some parents who wondered if students could take Earth Science and Living Environment. That never really come on before us, so I spoke with the guidance counselors and spoke with the department, we thought, well, I'm sure for this is scalable. So we sent a hard copy letter to these educational commenters, and they said, you'll be able to try it. Could we do the same thing if this mastery option was approved? I'd send a hard copy letter to all incoming juniors about this option.
Lisa?
I just want to say a word about the two-track option issue that's been talked about a little bit. I mean, obviously, there are parents who perceive that getting their kid a tutor to help them prepare for the Earth Science exam is a valuable thing to do. However, I can say from personal experience and the experience of the class that did that, took that, had in the year that my son was an eighth grader, that there was no evidence of a clear advantage to the students who got tutoring over the students who didn't. And in fact, I know that of the handful of kids who took the test that year, that at least one of the kids who did not take tutoring, do not do tutoring, passed sufficiently to be able to test out. And several of the kids who were tutored did not get a grade above the cutoff level, including my own kid. And that taught me a lesson, which is that you don't necessarily do what everybody else does because everybody else says you've got to do it. Now, I'm not naive enough to think that, you know, as a district, be able to persuade people of Ed's position, which I agree with. But I don't think that it should be the board's principal concern that parents not spend money that they choose to spend in particular ways and ways that aren't potentially useful to their kids. I think it's better for us to give kids the options that our educators think they should be given. And if parents think that the way to maximize their child's chances to get them tutoring, it's not really within our power to prevent that. So let's not stay up at night, either not stay up at night worrying about it, or more to a point, let's not deprive our kids of an option that they could have because of our concern about that.
Laura?
And just sort of to follow that thought, you're talking about kids who are already taking English IX Honors, English X Honors. We already have that sort of more rigorous coursework built into our schedule. So AP Lit has AP in front of it. It seems like, for all intents and purposes, AP Lit is going to sort of be an XI Honors-ish kind of class. You understand what I mean? These are the kids that actually already excel in English. So understanding that US literature is incredibly important and everybody should have it, you know, to then sort of slow them back down. I appreciate that the English Department is willing to say, all right, give them the option, they can take both, or they can master this, because these kids presumably are going to master the Regents Exam and they got it, so.
Deuter?
And you know I'm all in favor of people taking as much English as they possibly can. So I actually think it's wonderful that the English Department has thought through the relationship between the two parts of the curriculum in 11th grade and is encouraging people to work towards taking both of those courses together while anticipating ways and pathways if there are conflicts in the schedule. Because as we know, the master schedule is this incredible kind of Rubrik's Cube that you and guidance have to put together every year. We are a small school, it's extraordinary to me. We are a small school, it's extraordinary to me, the opportunities we make available with these kind of very complicated, you know, arrangements with small numbers of students for many, many course options. And so building in some possibility of flexibility strikes me as really prudent and humane. It may lead to less stress on some level. And I am very proud of our district's stance on a much more open pathway to AP enrollments than is the case in many school districts, where they create very high bar for participation, typically in AP coursework, or, you know, kind of movement through different kinds of pathways to get to those classes. We know that participation in AP programs can be very, very helpful for students, maybe not even students who are identified as being in an honors track. And again, I wanna reaffirm the decision that was made to continue to make participation in AP and taking AP exams available to all of our students, regardless of that cost, by not charging families for those, for those AP exams. So I think if we, as a district, believe in the value of AP programs, which I think we do, because we offer them, trying to create a flexible solution and introduce yet another option, particularly for students who love reading, because this is a literature-based AP, the Common Core has moved increasingly away from having students engage with literary texts, fiction, and so forth. So I think creating an option for students who really love that kind of work is a really great development, if we can make sure it's available and open.
And can I just follow up to say, because I wanna make sure that I understand, I wanna make sure that I understand exactly what we're talking about here. So this waiver is not a way of preventing students who might want to take the AP class from taking the class, if I'm understanding correctly. It's just a way to offer students who can get an A or better on the regions, the English eleven regions, to not have to take eleven, English eleven R. So a student who doesn't make that cutoff could still conceivably take a English eleven R and--
Yes.
--take them together, right?
Okay. That, I just wanna make sure that I was understanding.
Yeah, that would be very--
Peter?
Yeah, so I'm just gonna vote against this, but it's not because I am not in favor of choice. I've always been in favor of choice and supporting students and flexibility in scheduling, but I do worry about the consequences of this, of a test as the bar. Not about that I'm concerned about parents, how they spend their money is not really my concern, but how we promote different kinds of messages about achievement and success, and who has access to different courses, and how you get access. So I respect the English department, of course, and your leadership at the high school around this, but right now, I'm not comfortable with that as the way to structure it, so I just wanna explain to you my negative vote.
Well, just to expand a little bit, the criteria for, you know, demonstrating this mastery is not based only on the score on the test, but other scenarios have to take, you know, similar to what we do for English twelve and AP, regarding numbers of AP courses, or if there's a schedule, if there's a course in conflict, or a scheduling conflict, that would be considered, you know, taking that. Or the, you know, kind of the catch-all, that we found useful, there's another kind of reason. So it wouldn't be, as we envision, a scenario where the student would just, you know, take the test, get an A or a B, and then not have to take English eleven R. There'd have to be other characteristics of this, or a schedule, that would be the best strategy to see. Just to expand.
All right, Diane? Okay, so Diane?
I guess I just would say that, you know, I think that the school has done, a couple, last couple of years, a better job communicating with earth science, with the options. But I do think we need to explain it a little bit better to parents, because they, you know, they see that acceleration over that AP, and it's sometimes like a moth to the flame, you know? I don't know if they understand, you know, what it actually means, whether their student and that might be something that they could do a little bit better at, you know? So they can understand what it means, and just why kids accelerate. What's that?
I know we have to shut this off, but I mean, that this other larger conversation that I think, you know, we haven't had, but it fits into, is, like you said, the moth to the flame, right? I don't think kids are always just taking AP exams because they have a love for the subject matter, but because of the high stakes of, like, the way to get into particular colleges, to have X, Y, or Z number of AP exams. And you can go online and get all kinds of advice that says you need to take five, six, whatever, and, you know, the importance of our guidance counselors, and I know they've tried to do that job of kind of de-stressing this process and making it authentic for students, instead of trying to fit into this kind of high-pressure pathway to college, is something that's really important. And so I do have concerns about how we create a climate that's a high-pressure climate to take as many APs as you can, because you have to to be successful.
Having been, certainly my guidance counselor has worked with the Australian Southwest or some kind of, and their consistent message is that students should take the rigorous courses they can, which they have a reasonable expectation of doing fairly well. That's not an AP course in all cases, it's not an honors course in all cases, it's really, their focus is on, you're good with the student, and supporting their education in a way that's gonna prepare them to move on from high school. So that's, certainly that the message comes from my, our guidance department, it's not the message that comes from my office. I don't know where that comes from, I know--
Right.
--so we try to look against the, or, for students individuals, so they could first go, and then they're not able to, you know, help.
All right, so what's voted on this? All is in favor? It's all except Burns. No, Burns. Okay, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional department chairs and advisors for Rhinebeck High School for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation--
Thank you.
Thank you. The superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of the following individuals to positions in accordance with the RTA salary scheduled 2016-17 as follows. David Airstock, health and wellness coordinator, $4,687. Carolyn Peck, central treasurer, $2,586. Stephen Boucher, athletic director, $7,039.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional, additional summer 2016 curriculum program and parent work.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the resignation of Tina Myers in the position of custodial worker effective July 1st, 2016.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Tina Myers to the civil service position of senior custodial worker, assigned to the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective July 1st, 2016, on step 13, $52,534, in accordance with the anti-salary schedule for 2016-17, with a 26-week probationary period.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Stacy Stoliker to the civil service position of senior typist, assigned to the office of the Director of Special Education, effective July 5th, 2016, on step four, $38,002, in accordance with the anti-salary schedule for 2016-17, with a 26-week probationary period.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a first reading, the consideration of new board policy number 8334, use of credit cards.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Laura?
I just have a quick question. In the policy, it reads that certain board members would be granted to use a credit card. Is there any circumstance under which we feel like a board member should have a distant credit card?
If you were going to the NISP conference by yourself, and you needed to pay for certain expenses there, then they don't accept the purchase order, you might wanna take a credit card, unless you wanted to put it on your own credit card and be reimbursed, which is what we're doing currently. There are now, in addition to that, there are other reasons that we've talked about at policy committee, where some vendors won't take a purchase order. They'll only take a credit card.
Right. I understand that part, yeah, that's--
I mean, that kind of, that kind of pushed the envelope on the convenience of using your own credit card and getting reimbursed versus the actual need now for a school district to have a credit card, because some vendors just won't take a PO anymore.
Right. Yeah, I totally get that. I was wondering, is there any concern about board members having a district?
As long as you use it properly.
Of course.
If you don't, I'll have some issues. I mean, you all do take an oath at the beginning of your, your term of office, so--
And you all learned about, you know, Roslin and--
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Well, I mean, anybody could abuse a credit card. That's why we tried to set out parameters to kind of delimit how we would be using them, and people aren't gonna be running around with credit cards in their pockets. They're for a very narrow and specific use.
All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve summer 2016 special education service providers.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? All except flyshower, abstention, flyshower. That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve 2014-15 budget transfers in accordance with board policy number 6150 for the school year ending June 30th, 2016.
That should be corrected to 1516.
Oh, that should be 1516.
So it should be 2015-16 budget transfers?
Yep.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, all is in favor of the amended resolution? That's unanimous, that passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution regarding the transfer of unappropriated fund balance to the school lunch fund. Be it resolved, that the Board of Education of Rhinebeck Central School District hereby authorizes the appropriation of $45,000 from general fund unappropriated fund balance to be transferred to the school lunch fund to cover the prior year's school lunch fund deficit and the current year operating loss by June 30th, 2016.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution regarding the lease purchase acquisition of computer technology hardware, software, and related equipment. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that the Board of Education hereby approves a contract with Dutchess County Voces for the acquisition of computer technology hardware, software, and related equipment through a three-year installment purchase agreement, IPA, commencing in the 2016-17 school year, with a total principal cost of $113,199.85. And be it further resolved, that the Rhinebeck Central School District will pay Dutchess County Voces through its regular billing cycle, monthly billing cycle, over the three-year period to commence during the 2016-17 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution regarding the terms and conditions of a cooperative purchasing program for goods and services with the Region Four Education Service Center Lead Agency for the Cooperative Purchasing Network, TCPN. Whereas, the Board of Trustees of Rhinebeck Central School District has been presented a proposed inter-local agreement by and between the Region Four Education Service Center Lead Agency for the Cooperative Purchasing Network, TCPN, and the Rhinebeck Central School District found to be acceptable, and in the best interests of the Rhinebeck Central School District and its citizens, are hereby, in all things, approved. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Rhinebeck Central School District, Rhinebeck, New York, that section one, the terms and conditions of the agreement, having been reviewed by the Board of Trustees of the Rhinebeck Central School District, and found to be acceptable, in the best interests of the Rhinebeck Central School District and its citizens, are hereby, in all things, approved. Section two, Thomas E. Brunel, purchasing agent of the Rhinebeck Central School District, under the direction of the Board of Trustees of the Rhinebeck Central School District, is hereby designated to act for the Rhinebeck Central School District in all matters relating to the cooperative purchasing agreement, cooperative purchasing network, including the designation of specific contracts in which the Rhinebeck Central School District desires to participate.
So moved?
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the summer 2016 Board of Education meeting schedule.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of the 2016-17 CSE/CPSE committee chairs, CSE/CPSE parent members, and CSE/CPSE committee members.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional, additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Should it be 2015 or 2016?
Uh, no, it's 1516. Yeah, this, I can explain after Mark finishes. Sorry. You got your motion, Saban?
Yes.
Uh, this is just to have the replacement for Laura Magley be able to come in for a few days and shadow her before she retires, so it is in this current school year.
Okay. Did we get a motion, Saban?
Yeah.
Okay. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a donation of 11 scholarships for four-week introductory martial arts programs and uniforms valued at $1,650 for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School students from Robert P. Leclerc, Leclerc's Martial Arts, to be distributed to students selected by the school principal.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just have like a moderate concern that this is kind of like an advertising thing for the martial arts program?
Well, we, I mean, we had a concern the way it was presented initially, but we re, we redirected that and said that if they wanted to make a donation to the school district to give these scholarships to kids who might not have the money to participate in the summer program, that we would be the conduit for, for doing that. I mean, we did, we did initially have a concern about that. In fact, Mark had brought, there was, started out as, as an effort to raise money and have members of the staff contribute money, and we put a, we put an end to that, and told this particular vendor that if he wanted to donate scholarships, free and clear, no cost involved, that we would, you know, we would distribute them to kids who might have an interest in, maybe wouldn't be able to afford a summer program. It's really up to them as to whether they decide to do anything with it beyond a summer program.
Diane?
Two questions. So this covers an entire summer program?
Oh, it's, it's not an entire, it's a four-week, it's a four-week program, yeah.
And this came out from the vendor, not from the unit of school?
But, yeah, we didn't solicit this.
Peter?
So I apologize, like, it was on my mind, but I didn't ask ahead of time. I just, I'm assuming it's not like a board policy, like, it is a donation, but it's really to direct people in a very specific place. I just wanna make sure there are issues around, like, a private entity, it's not non-pro-- I mean, I--
Yeah, the only thing in our-- Yeah, the only thing in our policy prohibits private entities or for-profits from using school facilities to make money. If they were going to be holding classes here and charging kids, then that would be, that would not be allowed. So I mean, to the best of my understanding, this doesn't violate any board policy or state education department regulation. It's giving this to our students there, looking for us to distribute these scholarships. There's no cost to the kid. There's no, they're not making money off, I mean, directly, they're not making money off our school. Now, should a kid decide, hey, I like martial arts and, you know, I'd like to pursue this in the fall? I mean, there's nothing, I'm not sure how we can, how we control that any more than any other free program that a kid might decide, yeah, I want to keep doing this. And if the art center, maybe that's, I'm not sure if they're probably not-for-profit, but you know, if the art center, for example, wanted to donate scholarships to one of their summer programs, I mean, a kid might want to keep taking programs there after that program was done. If this involved kids paying money for part of, for even part of this, it would, from my perspective, it just would have been a flat, no, because you're, you are now making money off these kids. If you're giving a scholarship, then it's not a moneymaker.
All right. Any other questions? May all is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Chelsea Leahy to the part-time .8 FTE long-term leave replacement position of Grade VII Science Teacher assigned to Bulkeley Middle School effective September 1, 2016 at a salary of Step 1 MA, $58,482 pro-rated equals $46,786 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2016-17.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of chairs for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Kyle Moore to the civil service position of custodial worker assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective July 1, 2016 on Step 1, $33,704 in accordance with the anti-salary schedule for 2016-17 with a 26-week probationary period.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint TBA to provide architectural engineering services as needed for possible future capital projects and as architect of record as outlined in their submitted request for proposal.
So moved?
Second.
So I put this in my note to you earlier, I'm proposing that the board table this motion until our July 12 meeting, at which time we expect to have a fully legal counsel vetted recommendation made to you.
I would table this motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of tabling the motion? That's unanimous. That motion is tabled. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a lead extension, or extension of a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Laura Natalie, having commenced on May 31, 2016, where such leave should be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing to the extent of her approved sick leave and thereafter, such leave should be taken as unpaid childcare leave through January 2, 2017.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional work relating to the compilation, editing, and publication of the 2015-16 Anthology of Susan Wright.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion to.
And Mark, I just, I also put in your packet tonight, another, and I sent you an email about this earlier today, another adjustment to a, to the number of hours for Susan St. Clair for this past summer, who was approved for 40 hours, but actually worked 49 with the approval of Marvin Krebs and John Kennitzer.
So is there a motion?
Yeah, I just, I just gave you that, that motion, to approve the increase of 40 to 49 hours for Susan St. Clair for summer 2015.
So that's going to be 6.2.
That would be 6.26, and then we'll just bump the others down.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. All is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes.
I just moved to table. Can I?
Yeah, I would table the next two, yeah.
6.27 and 6.28, I need to table them.
Okay. All is in favor of tabling motions 6.27 and 6.28?
Diane?
Keep your head.
Those motions are tabled. All right. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment history of a particular person?
So moved?
Second.
Okay. All is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes.
I didn't make any communication.